Recording in progress.
Give it about 10 seconds to make sure we're really on TV. And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 26, 2024, meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We are here at our beautiful Town Hall with the clock chiming overhead because it is 6 o'clock. If you are in this room, you can watch us by continuing to be in this room with us. If you are at home, you can watch us via local access television. And that will also be posted to YouTube later, so the meeting is being recorded. And I believe it's on Facebook Live as well. If you're at home watching us and you want to interact, you can either drive down to Town Hall, which may not be timely, or more likely, you can log in or call into Zoom. And all that information is available on our agenda on the Town website. And I believe I have now said all the legal-esque things I am required to say without reading from a paper because that always feels boring. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming here, those who are here. Thank you for watching, those who are at home. And as always, we'll open with public comment.
A question. I heard you guys talking about open space.
So first, I would ask you to, as always-
Thank you. Greg Roy, Dillson Roy, but I live at 105 Chestnut Street. This is more of a public comment.
Yeah.
What is the first? If someone wanted to approach the Town about some open space, an open space land donation, what is the process for that? Who would they contact? Who should they reach out to first?
I would turn to our Open Space Committee member and see if Mr. Allison has a good answer for that because I do not.
I didn't either, and I probably should. It has nothing to do with the hearings this evening. That's why I'm in public comment, so.
So Open Space is a subcommittee of the Planning Board. They're not chartered at all to hold land. It would need to go to municipal of some sort, either general municipal. Conservation is a very, very popular one. However, Agricultural Commission now is able and allowed to hold land. So there's that possibility. But I'm pretty sure that you would approach the Select Board and they would probably reach out to Open Space for an opinion. Open Space typically has only been created to do our First Rite of Refusal.
Gotcha.
I believe that was the original intent.
Like for land coming out of chapter protection. Okay. So approach the Select Board first, you think?
That would be my guess.
Okay. All right. I had a question on it. That's why I'm asking, so. All right. Thank you.
That's always been my suggestion to people.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dave Rogers. I live at 82 Highland Street. And a procedural question. You've started the meeting, but I noticed that you didn't pledge allegiance to the flag.
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a particular reason?
So the short version of the reason is when I was made- when I was voted Chair of the Planning Board,
Yes.
I stopped including the pledge as part of our opening. The, I mean, that's the short reason. The longer reason is I could get into more detail. I can do it here if you wish. I can do it some other time as well. But the long and short of it is, one thing I noticed in our meetings is whenever we had the pledge in this room, over half of the people in the room were choosing to, lacking a better term, incompletely or not at all, incompletely participate or not at all participate with the pledge. Part of my background comes from things like education and other life. I was a public high school teacher. And I'm always on the lookout for what we can do to make sure that the most people feel welcome.
Sure.
Now, I love the Pledge of Allegiance a lot. I'm a big fan. I enjoy it. But I also recognize there's many members of our community who do not feel that way. And from my estimation, it is more important that we, as a board, be as welcoming as possible and as accommodating as possible to as broad a range of the community as we can be. Knowing that that won't be everyone's cup of tea because I know there's those who feel we should definitely have the pledge at the start. I felt it was more important than saying the pledge when the people up here and the people engaging with this are doing their patriotic duty by engaging in government. I thought it was more important to be welcoming to a broader swath of the community. Now, the other thing is, if there was a desire for the pledge, I would welcome anyone on the board or from the public to come in and about five minutes before the meeting starts, lead us in the pledge. And I would be welcome to encourage that, and I would happily participate. So I'm not, this was not a move to kick it out. It was a move for the formal meeting to be as welcome as possible.
Sure. Well, thank you for that explanation. Now, I'd like to give you the other side of the story if I could.
Absolutely. Please do.
I'm a 100% disabled veteran. I served in Vietnam. And when I was a member of the Board of Selectmen, some people asked me what my proudest contribution was because I've been involved in a lot of things. And I said, "The proudest contribution I made was to ensure that the Pledge of Allegiance was taken care of and honored at every meeting." And that still is my position. For those who, for whatever reason, choose not to, that's okay. That's their right. But it's also my right. And I think that every meeting that takes place in Lunenburg should begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And having served our country and feeling the effects of saying, I feel very strongly about this. So I would ask that you lead us, Mr. Chairman, in the Pledge of Allegiance for every meeting that the committee serves on.
I very much appreciate that input, Mr. Rogers, and thank you for that. Like I said, it is important to me that, no, I value the pledge. I would be happy to participate if someone else were leading it because I'm trying to keep that split for the board. But I hear your concern as well. If you want to talk about this more, I don't want to stifle public discussion, but by the same token, this is a meeting with many things on it. I'd always reach out, be happy to grab a coffee and talk it over.
Are you buying?
Happily, actually. Unless that breaks some weird rule, which I don't think it does.
That's fine. All right. Well, it's more important to me that it be done. And again, along that line, I think it's important for the people at home that are watching this, understand what's involved. So there's a couple of different hats to this. So I just hope that if it's decided that you do this, that you do it in full view of the televised part of the meeting so that it's not something that we're ashamed of. So that we stand up and give thanks and pledge allegiance to this great country. Thank you so much for your time. And I look forward to joining whoever in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Other public comment this evening? Seeing none? We will go on. Next item on our agenda is-
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Yes.
Is it your intent to have the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
It is not my intent to have the pledge this evening. I've heard your concern. I've seen support for it from at least one member in the audience here as well. I would like, tonight, I intend to keep on the path that I have set as Chair. Again, I'm open to having my mind changed. I'm not convinced, I'm not sure I'm easy convincing on that change, but I am open to having my mind changed, and I'm happy for that discussion. It gets into some bigger ideas than I think are pertinent for the Planning Board itself. So I don't intend on it tonight, but I will take, sincerely, I will take it under advisement, and I encourage others at home as well. If you wish to have a dialogue about this, I am happy to sit down and talk about it.
Here, let me come up.
Sure.
Still under the category of public discussion. I would like to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And if anybody would like to join, that's fine. And if not, that's okay, too.
I think that's wonderful. I have no problem with that at all.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. But thank you.
It was a thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any other public comment? Very good. I will move us on to, now, we have two public hearings listed tonight for 317 to 321 Sunny Hill and 255 Sunny Hill. Now, 255 Sunny Hill is continuing, correct?
They have requested-
Restored continuance. All right. Do we expect that would be shorter than the other? Because I think, could I ask, are there people here tonight who are here, members of the public here for, who are here for 255 Sunny Hill? Okay. Are there members of the public here tonight for 317 to 321 Sunny Hill? Well, we have members of the public here for both, so I'm less concerned about order then. So I'll stick with the agenda order. And next up would be, so, a public hearing for 317 to 321 Sunny Hill, stormwater permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am Greg Roy with Dillson Roy Civil Design Group, and I'm here representing Tim Battles, who's with us this evening. We were here before you, a month ago, I think it was, to open the public hearing for a stormwater, stormwater hearing. At the time, we had received a, had just received a peer review comment letter from Graves Engineering, which we hadn't had a chance to respond to or issue any revised plans. So we did present the project to you, and at the end of that, continued it to tonight. One of the reasons for continuing it to, for a month instead of the two-week window was to allow time for the Zoning Board of Appeals to act. We had a joint, you may recall, we had a joint filing with the Zoning Board of Appeals to ask for a variance relative to the driveway grade. The Zoning Board of Appeals did grant the variance back on the, about a week and a half ago. So we did receive the variance for that. So the plan remains unchanged relative to that. So, and truly, really, nothing of substance has changed on the plan. We did revise, issue a new plan revision, a new plan dated the 1st of February in response to the peer review comments. And I just want to summarize those four of them that were, that needed response. And I just wanted to go through that if I could. Mr. Walsh from Graves issued a letter on February 22, which is the one I'm going to be reading from. And I'm going to skip, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair. Some of them, comments were not substantive at all.
I'm sorry. Are you, February or January 22?
So I have a letter here, February 22.
Okay.
Which is his latest, latest and greatest letter.
I have one labeled January 22.
That was the first one.
Okay.
And there's a follow-up.
That's correct.
Based on his revisions.
Okay. I'm looking for that one then. Thank you. Got it. The file is Sunny Hill Road, Storm something, but.
That was the one.
Water review letter.
Thank you.
I thought that was the one I opened.
No, you opened the one that said GEI review. I bet. Because that's what I had open. All right.
Okay. All right. So February 22, and again, I'm going to, I'm going to go down to item two. The comment was that the owners and applicants' telephone numbers need to be added to the plans. We did do that in the revised plan that we submitted, and Jeff did acknowledge that that was done. So that is complete. Number three, soil testing needs to be performed at the proposed rain gardens to demonstrate that the soils are suitable for groundwater recharge and that the required groundwater offset will be achieved. We actually had already performed the soil testing. We just hadn't shown it on the plan. So we also included the soil testing that was performed. Previously, we included that on the plans. And we also provided some groundwater mounding calculations because we were less than four feet to the estimated high groundwater table. And Mr. Walsh acknowledged that the testing was shown on the plan and that the groundwater mounding calculations were provided, and that based on the information submitted, GEI has no issues with the rain gardens designs nor with the groundwater mounding analysis. Number four, the plan should include the site zoning information. So we have included the zoning information on the updated plans. There's a zoning table on the middle of the page on the left-hand side. We added that. And then number six, and again, I'm skipping the ones that did not have any required revisions. Number six, Mr. Walsh pointed out that our originally submitted stormwater calculations incorrectly modeled the void volume within the stone recharge trench, which needs to be modeled with 40% voids instead of 100%. And we did correct that and submitted the revised calculations, to which he said was satisfactory. He acknowledged that change. And other than that, there were no additional plan revisions that we made relative to the work. I think that was responsive to all of the outstanding items that we had. I don't remember any others coming up from your board a month ago. So I'm happy to take any questions. I do have a couple of things I wanted to bring up, but I think I'll stop with that and see if there's any questions.
All right. We have brought up and looked at the most recent letter from Graves Engineering. So I would turn to the board and ask, so far, do we have any questions for Mr. Roy or any thoughts?
Yes. The stone recharge trench with the adjustment to 40%, did that simply change the values that that will take in? Or did it actually redesign the trench itself to be able to meet the same requirements?
Great question. It did not require redesign. So it was just an issue of the way we modeled it. And when we corrected the model, it did not require us to resize the trench. So it's as, as it was designed previously.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Was it modeled at 4% rather than-
It was modeled at 100%. So we were assuming there was just a wide-open, you know, trench.
Go water, go.
Yeah.
All right. Looking to the board, see if we have other questions.
None for me.
All right. And Mr. Roy, you said you had more for us.
I do. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Maintenance on the rain gardens, is there a maintenance requirement?
We, yes. And we did submit an O and M report,
Okay.
which is included in our stormwater calculations.
And that will be recorded with the deed?
Yeah. I think you typically have that as a condition of those.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
So I wanted to talk through, if I could, something that's a little bit atypical, perhaps, of your board, but would greatly help my client. My client has had several, and he may hop in here if I say something incorrectly or he wants to add to it, but he's had several folks that have made offers, that have been accepted on the House and been under agreement. And they've, because of this issue, which I don't want to necessarily get into how we got here, but they, timing-wise, they've come and gone. And he's trying to get this thing, he's trying to do this right. He's trying to get out there and construct what he needs to construct. We expect this work to happen as soon as it can happen. But be that as it may, it may take a little while for that to be restored and stabilized to the satisfaction of this board. You know, we'll have to construct it, then we'll have to seed it, we'll have to get into, probably into the growing season to have the plants take and things like that. The applicant is very interested in getting a temporary certificate of occupancy and has discussed that with the building commissioner. The building commissioner has said that he would really be looking for direction from the Planning Board relative to that. So if there was any chance that you would be amenable to including a condition, something like this, and I might, I'd like to read it if I could, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to. Prior to the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy, the stormwater system shall be constructed and an as-built plan prepared by a professional engineer be submitted to the planning department and building commissioner documenting that the work was constructed in accordance with the approved plans and conditions of approval. Until this work is completed, the Planning Board is amenable to allowing for a temporary certificate of occupancy, provided that the work is completed within 120 days of this order being issued. And that just gives the, the final discretion on whether or not to grant the temporary certificate of occupancy, of course, does not fall with your board. It falls with the building commissioner. We recognize that. But he indicated to us that he'd be looking to at least know that there wouldn't be any objections, I think. And it would really help us out a lot if you would be amenable to something like that.
Thank you very much. For the sake of the public viewing, or here and at home, and as well as a reminder for the members of the board, could I get the dime store version of what led us to where we are?
Sure. Sure. 2002, I believe, the building, in the spring of 2002, the building permit was issued based on essentially the plan that exists today. And again, we're talking about, 317 is the one that's constructed. 321, which is on the north side, has not been constructed. Okay? At the time, the building permit was granted, and the work began on the property. Fast forward to last fall, the applicant, and I'm skipping a lot of things, okay? I'm trying to summarize. The applicant requested a certificate of occupancy because the building was completed. And this process was flagged as being, as being something that should have happened because there was greater than one acre of disturbance that happened on the site. I think what happened was, whether it's a miscommunication or however it happened, the building permit was issued for 317, which is the lot on the bottom side of the plan. And the clearing that was done, if the clearing was just done for that lot, it would have been, it would have been underneath the one acre, it was less than 40,000 square feet that was required. But what ended up happening-
I believe your client may have a thought as well.
Thanks. Hi, Tim Battles. I'm the owner of 321 and 317. Just a quick, it's 321 where the building is completed, not 317. It's the other way around, that's all. No, thank you, Tim. I'm sorry about that. 321 is the one that's constructed. 317 isn't. The one at the bottom of the page is the one that's constructed. All right. That was correct. For whatever reason, both lots got cleared down to, you know, not at the bottom of the hill, but a long way down past where we needed to work. And that was greater than the acre disturbance. I think that happened after the building permit was issued. So I think that there was just a, there was an issue relative to that. So as soon as that came to light, we started working on preparing the application. The applicant wants to make this right. He's here to make it right. He wants to get started on this construction as soon as possible. But that's a brief history. It just was one of those things that happened for whatever reason, whether it's a communication issue with the contractor or whatever. And so when it came to light, we put together the filing and came to you folks to correct it.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Again, because we have members of the public here watching at home.
Understood.
As well as just to make sure that we all have, up here, have everything fully in mind. That reminder of the history kind of puts things in context.
Yep.
So I'll turn to the board. The board is, oh, sorry. The applicant is requesting if we would be amenable to letting the building commissioner know that we would be okay in some specific circumstances here with a temporary occupancy permit. Again, that decision lies with the building commissioner. And that would simply be for us to say, we're, because he's looking for us to say, yes, we're okay, or no, we're not. Do we have thoughts or do we have questions? And once we get the board's thoughts and questions, I'm going to turn to the public as well, for those who are here online or for those who are here present.
Just making sure I have things straight in my head. 321 has already been built.
That's correct.
And we're looking for temporary-
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. That was my only question. I wasn't sure the status of the building itself.
And again, we'd be seeking that temporary occupancy from the building commissioner. We're just more or less looking for you to opine, maybe even do it as a finding and not a condition, however you'd like. We're just asking for a little bit of support so that he can at least know that it was discussed and that it had no objection to it.
And Mr. Harris, when I talk about the board, traditionally, the land use director has chimed in freely as well, and please feel free to continue with that.
Mr. Roy, have you given a job cost assessment, what's going to take to do the stormwater improvements?
I think the applicant's been working with a contractor. Did you want to talk to that? Hi, Tim Battles again. Yes, I already have a contractor lined up and ready to go.
Do you know what the cost is going to be to do the stormwater improvements?
For both lots, it's $49,000.
The reason I raise that is Section 2 of 4-1 of the stormwater bylaw, and Section I of that provides a board may require a performance guarantee. One of the issues with a temporary CO is the property gets sold. And then the new buyer, the new owner says, I don't mind anything about this. I don't want this. And then you get into a discrimination issue. If you have a performance guarantee, that provides some money or financial mechanism to ensure that the work gets done. And if there's an acknowledgement by any recipient of the property, any transfer, that they're aware of this and they acknowledge and are agreement with it, then that precludes any problems developing once a property is transferred. And I didn't know how long it'd be. The building commissioner talked about this some today because I asked him what he, if he had any issues with it. He just wanted to be sure that there is some type of comfort level that, like a performance guarantee, some that would get, make sure it gets done.
Aside from my desire to complete this and get this project over and done with, I'm willing to- I'm willing to, you know, to do whatever.
And I'm sure Mr. Roy's seen this, where.
Oh, yeah.
Where you've got, somebody sells the property and new buyer doesn't know anything about it, and then lo and behold, the town's left in a.
Yeah, well, so far, the two buyers who have backed out because of this, it's been because of the, you know, tentative nature.
So I would suggest possibly, and I've got some possible conditions here, that the board establish a performance guarantee, require that the performance guarantee be, either the performance guarantee be deposited in the town or the work be completed.
Right.
Prior to, to a CO, whether it's temporary or permanent, doesn't matter. Or for, and if there's any transfer of the property, there'd be an acknowledgement of these conditions, and if necessary, a new performance guarantee by the new owner. Because you sell the property, you may not want your money tied up. So make that, that type of structure so there's some certainty regardless who owns the property 30 days from now, that's going to get done.
Sure. That brings me to another question. Would the board be amenable to me, since I have a contractor lined up, if you approve things, could I get started sooner rather than later? I know there's probably some risks that I would be taking to do that.
There's no appeal period for a stormwater permit.
Oh, alright, I thought there was.
There is on your zoning.
The driveway.
And that was filed the town clerk today.
Okay.
So the 20-day appeal period begins today. And so, yeah, so you don't have that, this appeal period, but you have that appeal period. And, yeah, I think that's what I would suggest the board take and consider approaching in that way. And be consistent on things like what the board has done in the past.
Okay, I think if I, you know, if the board approves, this, you know, 90% of the work would be completed before the time period for the driveway appeal. And I think since it'd be that far along at that point, I just lost the buyer on Friday, so I don't think I'll have another buyer, you know, by the time I have this thing mostly completed, at which point, you know, I'll put a performance guarantee for whatever's left or, or, whatever the process needs to be, I will, I will do that.
Great, thank you. I'll ask if the board has any other questions before I open for the public as well?
I do.
Or thoughts or anything else?
Comments more than questions. So we've given, we've given the developers the opportunity, put up performance bonds before, but on large developments such that there were multiple units on one piece and they wanted to start selling them off one at a time, we required a bond. We had never done that before for stormwater up until, oh, the developer sold the property already and it's not done. I was very much against that, and my understanding was that the board was as well not happy with it. And I'm really not in favor of doing that. However, I'm just one person, and I just wanted to remind everybody that we have only done this once for stormwater and it was on lots that were already sold. I will also mention the difficulty that we have had getting things done once the contractor has left the situation. There's no way that we can force a homeowner to do it, right?
Well, if you have performance guarantee.
That's if we had the, yeah, but still, I mean, the development of property is, is on, the onus is on the developer, not the homeowner, not the home buyer. I mean, the whole process here, planning board, is to ensure the happiness, satisfaction, public safety and everything to do with the public, not the developers. And, I mean, there's already been variance given for 12% on the driveway, which, again, is not our, our purview. I don't believe you would have had to come here in the first place if you'd gone along with the rules, if you'd stayed on one lot, finished that lot, sold it, moved on to the next one, you wouldn't have had to come here for a stormwater permit.
You would have on the second one.
If somebody had caught it.
Yeah.
Right, but likely if he'd finished the first one, sold it, and then started on the second one, I don't think anybody would have caught it.
On the bylaw, he would have, is required to come.
Okay.
The one point of order, or not point of order, question I, I guess I have is, we actually did the clearing, and I was unaware that there was even a bylaw that required a stormwater, but that's, you know, that's my fault, ignorance of the law and all that is no excuse, I understand. However, we, we got the building permit after that lot plan was cleared, not before. So it wasn't done after we got a building permit. And subsequent to that, there had been many inspections of the property to, you know, for the foundation and everything like that, and it was never mentioned about the stormwater until we went for the final inspection. So I'm kind of throwing myself at the mercy of you guys a little bit to be, you know, to, not do the right thing, but to have, take some consideration to that, that this one totally caught me unawares, but I'm willing to do whatever I have to do to, to take care of that, including the performance bond, so.
And I can just touch on, I agree with Mr. Allison's perspective on it. I mentioned performance bond, if the board was, was entertaining, agreeing or pining that a temporary CO is fine, then I think there should be a performance guarantee in place before any CO is issued, because that gives security.
Sure, sure. I'm not sure what that entails from a cost perspective or anything like that, but.
It depends on how you do it. There's multiple ways to perform this guarantee. The rarest way is put the cash up, I've seen that done. Most common way is e, either surety, like a letter of credit from a bank, or tri-party agreement. If you've got a bank that's financing this, then basically it's a three-party agreement where they agree withhold X amount of money from the contract until we release it. And leasing is specified in 204-1, the whole process for that.
If I put the cash up, would I be able to draw down on that cash as I?
All you have to do is come back to the board, ask for a partial release.
Each time, or?
Each time, yes.
But I would still be able to use that money if I put it up in escrow somewhere to, to pay down as I went?
Depending on how it's structured, you might be able to, but still would have to have planning board approval before you could draw it down.
Okay, so that would probably extend the, the timeframe?
It's slowed down, there's no doubt about that. And the board may or may not be agreeable to the performance guarantee. They might just say, no, have the work done before you get a CO.
Okay, well, given the fact that if everybody's going to, if the board does approve the plan, I could theoretically begin to work on it tomorrow, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I, by the time I came back to the next board meeting, this might be completed. Except for maybe the plantings or something like that, at which point.
There, there's one scenario in which the board could specify, no, you got to complete the work before a CO is issued. If 30 days down the road, you're 90% done, but you got a buyer that wants to close in two weeks, you could come to the board and ask for them to modify the agreement or the conditions to allow a smaller performance guarantee on that portion, but that'd be a board decided whether they would agree to it.
Okay.
Can I finish my comments now? So the, the last thing that I had to mention was that there's considerable built-up slope that's going to be raw land, raw, raw soil until it's stabilized. And stabilization is the last thing to happen on something like this. And I, I'm sure we're all aware that there's a cold water fishery, Catacuna mog, that feeds our five public water supply wells in Lake Shirley, just directly down the hill from this. I think that the potential for problems kind of outweighs possibly some inconvenience to a developer. Also, if, in the case that it was sold, and now it's all on the homeowner, but we still have some money to, to fix it, and it doesn't get fixed, and it's not stabilized, and we get torrential rains and it washes the whole frigging basin down the hill, that 25 or 30 grand that we got is not going to cover. So this, and, and this is, this is more to my, my fellow members than anything. You need to look at certain things specifically and very carefully before you allow variation from our regulations. And it's reasons like that that they're the way they are. So, I mean, I'm just saying that there's, there's a considerable amount of soil there that if it wasn't stabilized and we got torrential rains, could just wash right down the hill. And the homeowner's not going to want to pay for it, and, and whatever we have for bond is not going to cover it. So, now I'm done.
Alright, so I would like to hear from other members of the board at this time, just to keep that discussion going as well. If there's none, that's okay, but I want to give us the opportunity to.
No, I didn't have anything.
Thinking out loud for myself, I'm trying to wrap my mind around what works best here because, I mean, I'm, I'm torn by my two really simple desires. I like helping people, and when there's a mistake, trying to help get it smoothed over so everything can go easily. I very much value Mr. Allison's concerns about if, about the potential for things going sideways and how much that could leave, really leave the public in a bad situation. And I'm trying to wrap my mind around both of those and how I feel. Just kind of sharing my thoughts out loud. I do want to turn and ask if there's other members of the public who wish to speak on this, because this is a public hearing, public comment is welcome. If you are at home and wish to speak on this, do use that hand raise feature. Go ahead, and in general, if you're at home, use a hand raise feature at any point. We're generally, as a board, not shy about taking public comment most of the time. And so use a hand raise feature, Ms. Aubrey will let us know if that is the case. And because I asked from my own Zoom experience, our waiting room is empty too? Cool, great. Now, the applicant and his engineer are consulting, when you had more you wanted to share. Thank you for your patience, I don't, didn't mean to cut you off, I just wanted to make sure we heard from everyone.
No, I greatly appreciate that, I think I'm all set, so thank you. Well, it's worth, this is what I read.
Okay, thank you. So.
Want to make a suggestion?
Yeah, happily, because I'm, I'm trying to, I'm still chewing things over and everything.
There's no reason that we can't go ahead and approve this and let them come back later for whatever else they want additionally, I believe, isn't that true?
Yeah.
So there, there's no need to hold up the approval or whatever, however we feel about the application, and, and let them bring up their additional questions at a different time. Or we can go ahead and hash it out now, I, I don't think that we're ready to hash it out now since we just heard about it, but.
As I said, the board could make a decision, and in that decision, do a standard approach, which is require completion of the work prior to issuing the CO. And if 30 days from now, he's 90% done, he's got somebody who wants to buy it, you know, let's come back to the board and ask the board to amend the decision to allow a performance guarantee on a smaller scale. But that'd be, and the board could deny it at that time, or they could agree to a modification at that time.
Well, exactly, because the last time we did it, we had already signed off on everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, so definitely something can be addressed.
Mr. Roy, please.
Yeah, I, I think that, given the fact that there's no appeal period for this and he can start pretty much right away, that I don't know that it, I think that makes a lot of sense what Mr. Allison is saying. Why don't we just stay silent on it, just issue it as you would normally do that, and if, if, if it, in 30 days, we want to come back and petition you, hey, there's some plantings and some seeding that we want to, that we'd like to ask you to, protect with a performance bond, we'll come back and make that specific request at that time. So I think that might make the most sense.
Alright, thank you. And I think what's been said so far personally sits where I am as well, about if, if we don't need to do it now, I'm happy to kick the can down the road because then when decision-making time comes, we're making it from a, a more, a more globally informed standpoint, because we know what's been done, we know if, there's a world where all the work gets done before CO is needed, there's a, I mean, there's met so many options here, I'm happy waiting.
And, and you could, if they do come back 36 days from now and say, we want performance guarantee, you could ask them to do a as-built of what's been done.
Yeah, that, well, we'd probably come back at that with, with, you know, presumably, we're going to be starting soon, and if we come back to ask you for any kind of bond, it would be a partial, and we'd be telling you what's done through the, through a NASDAQ plan, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
Great.
And just to cover another base, I believe we've had, in the past, we've had our peer review engineer confirm that, that money is adequate.
Right.
So that would be an additional.
Well, then we could, we could maybe even do that before the meeting.
And.
Yeah, fair enough.
And I just, I'll state from my professional experience, I always increased the amount from what the, even, even my own engineer said was going to cost, I always advised board go up 15, 20%, just covering inflation. And the fact that even this party has to do it, there are different rules and regulations you have to go by.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
Alright, great. I'll ask the board, this is a public hearing, and so I'll ask the board if we have any other questions for the applicant before we close the hearing and deliberate. I have that process right, correct? Okay, great, okay.
And once you close the hearing, they can't say anything?
Yeah.
No additional.
So are we comfy with all the information we have? Are y'all comfy with everything you've given us?
Yes.
Okay, great, then if we're ready to close the hearing and deliberate, I'm happy to accept a motion.
I move that we close the public hearing for the stormwater permit of 317, 321 Sunny Hill.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for myself, alright, thank you. So, to my understanding, we have a letter from Graves Engineering saying, knowing we're kicking the can of certificate of occupancy down the road, we have a letter from Graves Engineering saying.
I'm sorry, is this, is this, isn't this input? Or is this, is this able to be done in deliberation, not to cut you, I'm sorry.
No, please.
But, but input from Graves, wouldn't that be additional information?
The letters have all been made part of the record.
Okay, okay, yeah, good point, good point, thank you.
We have the letter from Graves saying, and it's a letter as well that Mr. Roy read in as well.
That's true, yeah, I was.
Yeah, nope, fair, fair.
Thinking and writing and bad idea.
Just think, if you're at home and you want to discuss the legal minutia of how to run a town, Town Caucus will be coming up and there will be plenty of vacancies for you to come and help out. I promise it's actually more fun than it looks.
But if they go to that, they can't come here because they're always on the same day.
I think it's a conspiracy.
I think so.
From the highest levels of. Alright, so we have a letter from Graves saying, see, it is met their satisfaction. I turned to us and say, how do we feel? Are there any additional, what's this, I'm losing the word, requirements on one of these?
I'm pretty sure we've just done construction hours and.
Yeah, but what's the term, I've lost the term.
Conditions.
Conditions, thank you. Conditions, thank you. Hate to lose words now.
Yeah.
Are we happy with conditions? If we wish, if we wish to approve, are we happy conditions as standard? Are there any additional conditions we would wish to consider? Construction hours, as Mr. Allison points out, we need to specify.
What other conditions, and this is to Richard, what other conditions would we consider, given the request that we already have been made aware of?
I think what, the only conditions I can think of is the standard ones, they have to do in accordance with approved plans. Mr. Roy mentioned that they anticipate doing the work in 120 days. If you want to have done within a certain period of time, specify that. No CO issued prior to completion of the work, which is a standard condition. So, in those conditions, I'd be suggesting you implement the patch.
I guess, I guess is stabilization of the slopes considered completion of the work? I believe it is.
Yeah. It, completion of the work is, completion of the work is presented in the plans.
They don't show grass on the slopes, though, so...
They didn't set in the control, not what they normally do. It includes stabilization of slopes during construction and prior to, and at completion.
I'm personally am fine with the standard conditions and the standard construction hours for residential areas. I think we've, I think we, we had broken the standard, standard hours down from residential and others, hadn't we?
I think we have in practice. I don't think we can, I don't know that we ever said, this is standard hours, so we say standard hours, we mean X. I think we've always specified them.
We depended so much on Adam. I'm just wondering, does Adam has any notes on what we had said?
What we can do is go back to a prior decision.
Mm-hmm.
Wait.
On residential and incorporate that, if that's what the board directs as a condition.
I think there was a difference between residential and commercial.
Yes.
So, that's true.
We had those as a matter of practice, of that I'm sure. But I don't believe we ever said, standard hours are X, therefore, we can say standard hours. I think we always had to specify.
What I would suggest is in your motion, that the hours of construction be limited to those that the board has previously approved for residential. Stormwater project.
Okay.
And then I can see what you did previously, incorporate that into the decision.
I'm comfy with that. I can only think of one instance where we did different hours, and that was not residential, because that was for the...
I think it was for PJ Keating's.
Oh, two. Keating's, I was thinking of the one downtown, the autism school, because we were concerned about, we were...
Main Street, yeah.
Yeah, because of the school traffic there, we kinda offered a wider array, so they could try to avoid having buses and kids walking and heavy construction in the road. All right. So, if people are comfy, I would look for a motion to approve with standard conditions and the standard hours we have previously set for residential, and Mr. Harris says that would be sufficient, and he could take care of that detail.
So moved.
Second.
And this includes the, no, the project has to be completed prior to issuance of CO?
Isn't that, isn't that...
Is that your standard condition?
I think it, I would think it would be. I can't imagine it wouldn't.
It should be.
Should we add as well as completed, if, if not in standard condition? It should be.
Quite honestly, it's our own fault if it's not there, so...
I'm fine with it. All right.
I'll draft the decision based on tonight, and the chair can review and be sure it's correct.
Okay. Great. All right. So, we have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Who made the motion?
Hasn't been, hasn't been seconded, you're right.
I seconded.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
Second.
Well, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Get out there tomorrow.
I'll draft, I'll draft up the decision and get to the chair hopefully tomorrow afternoon.
Yep.
Wednesday morning, or latest, so he can sign and...
But you don't need anything in hand to start ripping it up.
Yeah.
I, I can email Brian saying, this is what they approved.
And I wish you weather amenable to early planting.
And may your plantings take root.
Oh.
Wow.
Thank you so much.
I say that because it didn't happen in our project.
Oh. All right. Going back up to our agenda, we now have a continued pub... Did, did we ever open the public hearing for 255 Sunny Hill?
We have. We, yeah, 'cause they chastised him, but they shouldn't get in that lot and...
Okay. All right, just wanna make sure. We have a, a public hearing for 255 Sunny Hill Road stormwater permit.
So, good evening, John Plifka, McCarthy Engineering, here tonight representing the applicant. We are requesting a continuance until the March 11th meeting. We have a scheduled sit walk with the Lunenburg Conservation Commission this Wednesday in preparation for their March 5th meeting, so we'd just like the opportunity to address any items that might come up at the sit walk before proceeding with our presentation to this board.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here this evening. So, there's nothing, you have nothing to present to us tonight, correct?
That's correct.
But because this is a public hearing, I do want to give members of the public here or online the opportunity to speak and ask questions as well. So, the applicant has, has requested a continuance, but we did request that, because this was on shorter notice, that they do come in tonight. Are there members of the public with questions here, or members of the public at home with questions, concerns, everything else?
Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. Editorial comment. This, excuse me, this, I believe, is the third or fourth continuance that we've had, at least. And I, I understand that things happen, but, not that it's a big deal for me, because I live right down the street. I'm old and decrepit, but, you know, it's, it's, it's too bad that we can't get this done and move along, because this seems like it's kicking the can down the road. Having said that, are there any other hurdles that one must go over relative to moving this along, other than the conservation?
So, just to your point, Mr. Rogers, through the chair, that we were waiting on a DEP file number, that was just issued the 12th of this month, so that was our holdup here. So, all goes well, we have a successful sit walk with the Conservation Commission Wednesday, address any of their comments, and present our changes that may happen at their meeting March 5th.
Thank you. I have viewed the site on numerous occasions, and I've, I've talked to some folks in the area about this particular presentation and project. If I understand correctly, the plan that I've seen, and there are, there are markers that go to the, the right-hand side of Mr. Patton's property, back to an area, a raised area, by the way, which is, is anticipated that that will be where the, the house will be placed. Is that correct?
I apologize for not having a plan. I'm not totally sure which one.
I'll have my assistant come in.
Oh, do we have a copy of the, we have a, I believe, a large copy of the plan here as well.
Okay.
And this, this is the plan that's been submitted and is part of the public record, correct?
Why don't we just give them the full size that we have?
Oh, sure, that way we're...
Let's just use this, 'cause otherwise, that's...
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly where we're going with it. Trying to...
Sure.
Water bottle down, or whatever it was. Yep, water bottle.
Welcome to McCarthy's.
Yeah.
Yeah, the wondering question.
Put this out there?
Okay. And this is the raised area.
If you could, speak in the microphone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that is the intended location, and it is a raised. It's, it's graded up.
Okay. Approximately how much upgrading is gonna be done, based upon your plan?
So, we're at a 470 here, and we're proposing a 474 finished floor elevation, so about three, four feet.
Okay. Thank you. All right. As I said, I, I went by, I've, I've been by this property numerous times, and the only other time that, that there were people here, some of the abutters were here as well, and I, I thought that I had the right stakes in, in sight when I, when I looked at it, and I think it is. There's pink and there's red sites. Have you been to the site?
I have been to the site.
You have not?
No, I have. A while back, but...
Yeah.
Continue with you.
Okay. I, I just think that this particular area right here is very, very wet. Comes down cascades off the hill, and from an aesthetic perspective, if you look at Mr. Patton's property, which is as neat as a pin, this hugs his driveway almost by inches and goes all the way back. The bottom line is, in my opinion, okay, and certainly just my opinion, I, I don't think that this is up to the standards that I would think should prevail for, for this, this area. And, and because of the, the fact that it's wet, I, I just think, and I hate to use such a strong word, but I'm going to, I think this would be a travesty if this were approved, and it was allowed to have a construction of a, a house back in here. If, if you look at the area, I, I can't tell you how close it is that they're proposing, you know, I think, I'm not a surveyor, but I think it encroaches into an area that I viewed as, as wetlands, I mean, as standing water moving through. I don't mean to put you folks on the, on the line, but have, have you seen this, this site, and are you, are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I have not been out to this site yet.
Sorry?
I have, I have not yet been out to this site. I see Mr. Allison nodding.
I'll, I'll respond to your comments afterwards, but...
Okay.
Yeah. I completely agree with what you're saying.
Okay. And, and I'm not trying to, to put you on the spot, believe me, but you really should, should look at this site, because it's just, I said, and, and, and just for your edification, there isn't a stronger supporter of development, good development, in Lunenburg than Dave Rogers. I, you know, I think it makes sense, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think that this makes any sense whatsoever, and I would hope that after your review of, of the site and the walk, and see how wet it is and everything, you will concur. Okay? Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you. You did a great job, Foley.
And, Mr. Rogers, if you do wish to speak again, we do have the remote mic and can get it out to you, so, and that is entirely Mr. Allison's awareness.
Actually, to get with you, if you want.
Could I take a moment?
No. I think that'll tap...
I would make one comment. You emphasized a lot about the wetlands and how wet it is. That's really something you need to be strongly voicing towards Conservation Commission on the March 5th meeting. 'Cause they will make the determination about the wetlands issues.
Correct. Thank you for that. And you don't know me, and I don't know anyone, but it's a given.
And that, that's something I was just going to get into as well, is, as much for the edification of those watching at home, the planning board is often very limited in what we can look at. We generally speaking, and, and there's always exceptions here or there, do not have the ability to say, "We don't like this, so no." We are generally constrained by the town's bylaws, and then by state laws as well. And again, to that end, as Mr. Harris pointed out, we don't have the purview to say if something is wetland, or what can be done about that. Still appreciate it being brought up very much, because that helps give scope to the conversation. So, I'm not at all trying to dismiss that, and I'm grateful for that knowledge. But ultimately, the wetland decisions lie with conservation, and what will be before us is, once all those decisions are made, it is up to us to make sure that if this is deemed buildable by other factors, that the stormwater, because this is a stormwater public hearing, that any stormwater system in place meets the required state laws and our local bylaw, which is more strict than the state laws, by design. Is that, would say that's an accurate representation? I don't wanna speak out of turn.
We have 20% larger TSS removal, that's about it, so I wouldn't, and it, that's still not the greatest, but I can't disagree with the way you put it.
I was, I was on the board when we had that, and that, I know that was a conscious choice we made. No, we are not light years ahead. We could get into why or why not, and if it's appropriate, and I've even hemmed and hawed and opined back and forth over the past couple of years, including that meeting where I had to get up and go look out the window and make sure my car was not washing away. That would've been awkward, because stormwater is a mess. Well, globally, now. All right. Thank you for all of this. I'll give you the chance to respond, share any other thoughts if you want. I'll ask the public if there's any more input.
No, I just, I think I'm all set.
Okay. Great. Then, I just wanna, again, ask the public if there's any other public comment. Would you like, is it easier for you to get the, have the remote mic brought?
Ken Patton, 290 Lemonster Road. My house is right next to this lot five that, that we're talking about, and one thing that's kind of important to me is if this project does go ahead, the sheet I have here and at a previous meeting, Justin, who works, yeah, works with you guys, had said that the driveway that they're putting in is at an elevation of two feet below my driveway. I'm sure he can verify it on the drawing right there. But there's a ton of water that comes off the hill, and sometimes it just runs through my backyard, and I just wanna make sure there's no dam set up with this driveway, where it might get put in, you know, like a little too close to the elevation of my driveway, so water like flows out onto my property. And Justin said, "No, no problem, you know, two feet below." So, my question is, is that, is, can I take that to the bank, that this...
You know, I admire construction contractors. They're hard workers. They put it, they put a lot to risk. So, uh, and I, I worked in the construction field a lot in my job and, uh, you know, I did, never did the physical labor, but I really admire, uh, those, those workers that, that do it. So, I'm not here to pick on them, um, uh, but, uh, I just want to make sure I did everything I could do, and that's why I've come to every meeting. I just want to, at the end of this, however it works out, I just want to know I did everything I could do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paterson. Do we have any other public comment or board comment at this point?
Uh, just a question of what time is the site walkthrough happening with conservation?
Unfortunately, I don't have all that information.
I can, I can tell you, I just looked at the, uh, agenda, uh, at the calendar and there's no meeting listed. So, um, I'm sure that they can do a site walk with two members, uh, but I don't think they... We, we posted a meeting for the, uh, recent site walk that we did at Lake Shirley, and I'm pretty sure that they typically will post meetings, but I'm not sure.
That's if there's a quorum. So there was a quorum for the last site walk, so we posted, but I don't think there's a quorum for this scheduled site walk. If, I don't think there's multiple.
Well, I would like to know what time it is as well, and I would like to go, but, um, I think that, I think that it's, it would behoove them to post a meeting for a site walk like that, because if they don't, they can only have two members out there.
I agree.
And they're definitely deliberating if they're looking at wetlands and making decisions on, oh, is this wet? Is this wet? That's deliberation. So... Anyways, I just wanted to mention that it's not on, it's not scheduled, and today's the deadline for a Wednesday meeting, so...
Oh, I do have, um, someone with their hand raised.
Okay. And to our...
Should I speak?
Uh, just go ahead and give us your name and address, and then the floor is yours.
Fantastic. My name is Stefan McSweney. I am, uh, record, oh, I am one of the owners of that site. So I heard the question come up about the, uh, meeting on Wednesday. So clarifying point, the meeting on Wednesday is at 10:00 AM, and that is with the conservation agent, uh, Ms. Darrow from the town of Lunenburg. She will be there as well along with our, uh, our expert to, to walk it. But I believe the conservation committee is, is tentatively scheduled for Saturday. It's my own schedule. Time is mine, but it's Saturday.
Thank you for that.
Great. Thank you.
Then I would expect not for me to show up on Wednesday, because if it's not a public meeting, then I shouldn't be there. However, Saturday should be posted.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. With no other questions or comment at this time, um, you were here to request a continuance. And when were you looking to continue to?
Uh, the next, uh, public hearing is March 11th, I believe.
Next planning meeting?
Yeah.
Um, and that should give you the time, that should be enough time to have your ducks in order by then?
Correct. That's the anticipation.
Okay.
It's my understanding that assumes Conservation Commission meeting on the 5th goes as they anticipate, and there's no major changes.
Correct.
All right.
No, I'm sorry. Do they have a meeting, a site walk and a meeting on Wednesday?
No. On March 5th, they have a, uh, the schedule...
March 5th is their meeting.
Yes, the public hearing.
Wednesday is not the 5th. Yes. Been a long day.
All right. So you're requesting to our March, uh, that we continue to, March, uh, I always want to see for myself if that's our next meeting. I feel better, uh, that we continue to March 11th. Well, if there's a member of the board interested, I would accept a motion, uh, to continue the Stormwater Permanent Public Hearing for 2:55 Sunny Hill Road to 6:05 PM on March 11th.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
All right. Thank you for your time. Have the rest of your night.
Did a good job. I know it's tough presenting something you're not familiar with.
Okay. In this eventful evening, our next up is the Certificate of Completion for 147 Holman and 159 Holman. And do they present, or do we just discuss? How is this?
We just discuss.
Okay.
And I believe you have a memo from, um, Site Visit Report from Graves Engineering.
Mm-hmm. And in our files, that's 147 dot 159 dot Holman, G E, dot G E I review.
And you may recall at the last meeting, I had suggested the board could possibly, conditionally grant the certificate of compliance based on DPW superintendent's comments. And, um, based on this report, I would be inclined to suggest that you probably cannot, or should not, issue certificate of completion yet. Because what the, what Graves Engineering is saying is there is one basin that the plantings need to be planted, because apparently they didn't survive. And, um, the other one has a stone, uh, trench drain that appears to have minor sedimentation that needs to be removed. And so technically they're not complete.
All right. Could you, at least for me, could you wa- walk us through that a little bit more? Because I, I hear it. I'm curious, for, again, just trying to process and understand everything. I'm not a professional here. How does the minor sedimentation make it not complete? And what is the general procedure for plantings that don't survive? Because at some point, um, plantings may not survive in the future. This is, I'm just trying to understand all of this. I'm not questioning, I'm wrapping my mind around it.
If the developer had requested these, uh, certificate of completion, release of performance guarantee, let's say six months ago, and they've done the plantings, and Graves had reviewed it and said, "Plantings are sufficient. The stone trenches are fine", then you'd be granting the certificate of completion. They didn't apparently request it as soon as they, probably should have. And so Graves gave me a report, and so the board didn't make the determination whether you think sufficiently complete or not. But Graves is saying there's two minor items. One made question whether the plantings is mine or not. The stone trench, this is minor sedimentation. I asked them, and, uh, the representative from Graves said they need to, they should remove it, remove the sedimentation.
Okay. All right. Thoughts, questions from the rest of the board?
We've definitely recently made stormwater a thing that we've put a lot of consideration into. As such, I, I think I agree that this is saying that their, uh, their runoff and their stormwater, requirements haven't been met yet. As such, we're still waiting for them to meet their requirements before we say it's done, is, is my thought or position on the whole thing, as it stands.
I would agree with that. I think it's difficult in winter to kind of assess that situation. But with the warmer weather this week and the next couple of weeks possibly, there might be a possibility of us re-reviewing this at our next meeting. Maybe Graves can make another visit out there, or if, I'm not sure if the contractor wants to send pictures or the homeowner, whomever is kind of in charge of that process. But yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable, I guess, approving it, at least not with what I've seen in this report.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll echo both of those sentiments as well as answer, well, to the best of my ability, your question about the sedimentation is, um, these have, uh, these have a lifespan, and, uh, and then they have to be rebuilt. And rebuilding a stone trench is basically digging out the existing stone with the sedimentation and replacing it with new. Now, these people have been working on this project for six months?
I'm not sure, Zach. What, it's been a while?
I believe that they're required to build the stormwater, uh, conveyance, uh, first, before they start disturbing the site. Meaning that not only is there going to be sand in there, there's going to be stones, there's going to be dirt, there's going to be everything that was on that site that got ripped up and washed down the hill. So, for these people to be buying a brand-new home, you can consider their stone trench to be five years old at that point. So, there's, there's one consideration. Uh, another is with stone trenches, if you see sedimentation at the top of, of a, of a, of a two-foot-deep trench, then it's pretty much failed.
My experience has always been that we would expect the contractor, at the completion of the project, to clean everything out.
Yes.
And so he didn't have sedimentation. Because it should, at the completion of the project, the stone trench should start off as new.
So, I want to say thank you. Because, um, I believe Mr. Willsner and Ms. Reed, um, well-expressed kind of my concerns. And, um, Mr. Allison, Mr. Harris, you both also just answered the question that I think I was asking, which is, okay, so if this, why is this a deal? Because it does feel weird that we'd see sedimentation, but I'm not the expert and glad to understand. I'm hearing almost universal trending in one direction, or universal, really. So do we need a vote to not release, or would that just be helpful to make it clear, or is it not needed?
I think it'd just be helpful to make it clear in the record the board considered.
Okay.
And there should be a motion that, based on the report from Graves Engineering, at this point in time, it would be inappropriate to issue a certificate of completion.
So, yeah. Uh, seconded. Does that work? So moved? Yeah?
That's me.
I had something else on my mind. So, in light of that, uh, I think, and we don't have to do it right now, but I think it, with these stone trenches, they're, they're, they're a nuisance. They, they provide TSS for total suspended solids requirement off of your paved surfaces. This is the cheap, easy, useless, in my opinion, in the long-term way around fixing that. So, for a developer to work on a site for six months and fill up that stone trench and not have to replace it is ridiculous in my mind. And in, in the future, I want to look, I want to actually have a conversation with Graves Engineering, with, with Jeff, and, um, see if he's ever heard of it, or if it's something that we can do, or if it's, if it's actually in practice. To have, I mean, when, when you're on a construction site, they've got what they call silt sacks. They put inside of a catch basin. So any, any, any silt excess runoff that goes into that basin with stuff in it gets retained in the sack. I'm wondering if they have something similar to that for, like, a stone trench, or maybe just not fill the stone trench with stone before you're ready to sign off. Might be the best answer. But a silk, some, something to catch any excess, because there's almost always going to be...
Basically, what you're talking about is having some type of interim construction sedimentation control.
Yeah.
And not do the final sedimentation control upfront.
Yeah, because those, there's only, like, like Greg was saying, forty percent void. So you fill in the stone trench, and forty percent of it is there for water. And that forty percent that's there for water fills up with silt over time. And then when you can see the silt on the top of the rocks, it's useless. It's, it's not effectively doing what it's supposed to be doing, and homeowners aren't going to notice that. You know, oftentimes they'll just grasp right over and they'll be gone.
No, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I think that discussion could be very beneficial for us to make sure that we are protecting the public in the best way possible and giving clear guidance to developers so that they don't have to guess. I always like to think that people should make the best decisions by default, but sometimes an extra nudge is needed.
That common sense, it's not common, and it's not common.
And what is best is always going to be debatable, because best versus good enough, and what's good enough gets real tricky. All right, but I hear you on it. So, I think we probably need another motion, given we've had a bunch of discussions since the last one. Do we?
No, that was just in general about our review of stone, of, uh, stone trenches, I thought.
Okay, but, so you said so moved. We had a second, then we kind of had a divergent talk. Can we still act on that motion?
Didn't we all, didn't, didn't we all do all I?
No, no.
I think we still act on the motion, because motion's still there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, we didn't. You just kind of, you went for it.
My bad.
Not worried. I am not going to interrupt discussion for technicalities that can be redone if need be.
Sometimes you should.
I...
Oh, they can be redone.
Yeah, that's why, like, because we could remove. But it sounds like it's still good?
Who seconded?
Uh, yeah, I did.
Okay. That was moved by Mr. Allison, seconded by Mr. Willsner. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Excellent. Okay. With no certificate of completion, we do not need to look at the release of performance. No, isn't wrong, or no, isn't correct?
No, you did it right this time. I did it wrong last time.
They've asked for, uh, lease performance guarantee. Board could, if they wish, grant a partial release. You can't grant the full release until the certificate of completion is issued. So the question is, do you want to grant a partial release or not? I think there's like twelve thousand total?
Yes, sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
Is that per house or for the total development?
Both of them.
For the total. It's, uh, eight thousand per...
Okay.
Lot three and eight thousand for lot four, I think.
Now, this isn't, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I, I guess for me, the question becomes, I mean, planting's comparatively small. Do we know what that?
No.
Yeah, that, that's what that trench is going to require, and if that could be a costly fix, and how costly?
Yep.
Because I don't want to have less than that, less money left than it would take to redo it right, for obvious reasons. But you have a thought as well, Mr.?
I do, um, and it's interesting that that eight thousand dollar figure came up, because the other two that we did before, I think, were four thousand dollars each for a total of eight thousand dollars. And we, we did two, we did two performance guarantee requirements, because they had sold to a private, the private developer had sold to the private owner, and then we had to do the, and I think it was only eight hundred bucks each. Or four, I don't, whatever it was, tonight I was, I was, I was quite surprised to hear him say it was about fifty thousand dollars. Forty-eight thousand dollars, I believe he said, for both.
Forty-nine something.
So that's twenty-five thousand dollars for one house versus eight thousand dollars for these houses versus whatever it was for the other two houses on, uh, Holman Street. Um, widely varying numbers. Uh, I understand that the ones we saw tonight are considerably more intricate, because they're on a slope and it's built up and filled. The other ones were dug out, so that's quite a bit cheaper.
So I just raised the issue, if the board won't entertain a partial lease or just say not at this time?
And we have no idea what fixing that trench could be on the upper end, correct?
Correct.
I am personally not comfortable releasing where we have no idea of what numbers would be, but I welcome other input on that, including contrary. All right, so, again, just, just to show that we did discuss it, it sounds like we might have a motion to not release the performance guarantee for 147, to not yet release the performance guarantee for 147 and 159 Holman.
Is that, is that necessary? Not, I mean, is that, is that, is that out of the ordinary to make a motion not to grant something like that?
No, but it, it does make clear in the record.
Okay. So moved?
Seconded.
Moves and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just so you, now, for the public, it doesn't preclude the, uh, development coming in saying, "I, I looked at Graves' letter, and my engineer says this rock's going to cost to do it", and Graves Engineering says, "Yeah, it's only going to cost about four thousand to do those", and then the board could grant the partial lease at another meeting, so...
Great. Thank you. All right, well. Onto board discussions. Yeah, in this area, we have multiple potential upcoming bylaws and where they are. Solar energy systems, battery, energy storage systems, uh, battery-energy storage systems, scenic roads, and water supply protection district. Let's, starting with solar as one of them. Mr. Harris could speak to the battery progress. I have grossly underestimated how much time my children are going to need over break by orders of magnitude, which should not happen, yet happens every time. I, I have not been able to put anything, I, I've not been able to put anything together that I felt even comfortable for us really talking about. So, I am of the opinion, there's no way we can do solar by May, no matter how much I want it and wanted it. Um, the, I would say that the Green Committee is interested in that, and I'm happy to attend their meetings and meet with them and chat about it and get their input, because I think they are a valuable resource there. And, like, on that front, but I don't think we could have anything before, yeah, until Fall Town meeting, myself. Unless we're in wildly different plate, thoughts on that?
I certainly don't disagree with that sentiment. I, I, I think I might have expressed that before.
Yes.
But, uh, I do understand from discussions with various people in, in, in the building next door that, that this, um, battery thing is, is, if we don't pass a bylaw, or if we don't even, well, if we don't pass a bylaw, there's something coming that we're not going to be able to regulate.
So, I should be more clear. When I say solar, I mean the solar bylaw rewrite, not the battery. Mr. Harris has been working on the battery. And, no, I, I firmly believe that that add-on is necessary for us to have control over the future of the town, as opposed to others dictating. And since the people who could dictate are saying, "Hey, why don't you make some decisions", I would like to take that opportunity. They seem like perfectly reasonable folks, and I see no reason to, even when someone's perfectly reasonable, to hand them the keys to the castle as opposed to safeguarding it ourselves.
You don't want to turn over the keys, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No.
I think, I...
Yeah, no, I don't think they're out to screw us. However, you don't have to give people opportunities.
Don't make for it, right?
Uh, the, the other touch on that, the aspect is, if you develop a bylaw that meets most of your local objectives, and the folks are looking to do something operating within that, then you get most of what you want. If, however, you don't have a local bylaw and they push it, and they go to the litigation, they end up getting everything they wanted, and the town gets nothing that it wanted. So, it's, it's better to get what we can than get nothing. It's my, has been my argument.
What was going on in my brain stated much more eloquently. It's almost like someone's been doing this a few years and has a good handle.
Tell me, mention the, talk about the battery?
I think that would make sense.
By next Monday, you will have in your shared file a draft of a battery stor- energy storage systems bylaw amendment. It will be amendment to section 413 of the bylaw, the solar bylaw, 4.13. And, um, it's basically add another part, subpart down there. And it will regulate not just the standalone battery-energy storage systems, but the accessory ones that you already have, that you didn't necessarily approve. But every solar operating system has battery-energy storage system on-site as accessory use, and you have to allow them as accessory to those. And so it'll provide some regulation for that, including, uh, some things that the fire chief and police chief have, uh, we, we discussed. For instance, the site safety plan that the fire chief will review as a precursor to them even applying for approval. A site security plan that the police chief will review and give approval of before they even submit for approval. So it's going to be some preliminary levels of detailed review that they would, uh, do. And part of that is because those will likely include some confidential proprietary information that you don't want to be in a public environment. Uh, I mean, for security, you definitely don't want to broadcast a security system.
No, that way the police are coming to, uh, in their application, the police say, "We've reviewed their security, and we deem it appropriate".
Yeah.
Rather than saying, "Here's the security system, here's the camera layout, here's all that..."
Yeah.
I was like, "You burglars need to..."
You know, so this one, include those type of things. The biggest challenge in looking at what the other communities have done is meshing it with the solar bylaw. The Lunenburg solar bylaw has a threshold of ten kilowatt-hours as a large system.
Mm-hmm.
And that, in many communities, is the threshold between small and medium.
Mm-hmm.
That's our threshold between small and large.
Yeah.
So...
And...
Made more sense ten years ago.
And most, my typically see in a battery-energy storage system is, okay, we're going to allow the large battery, in, energy storage systems where large solar fields are allowed. So I can't use that approach in Lunenburg, because it'd mean everywhere you could, you could have one, because of ten kilowatt-hour threshold. So I'm being more creative about that and try and get some, um, idea of what, put in there. And that's the reason, this will be a public hearing draft. We'll hold a hearing. Board can say, at that time, we, we want to revise it to do this or that with it, so it, it gives more opportunity for some discussion. There has been discussion about whether you want these in the water supply protection district. But I notice, in, when you look at the solar bylaw, for instance, large solar systems are allowed by right in the, um, solar overlay district. Two of those have accretive recharge areas in them. So, so we can't, so it ma- it makes it challenged to say, no, you can't put these in, in water supply protection district. We know, like I said, you can do large-scale solar, and including, by implication, that includes their accessory battery-energy storage systems. So there's going to be some balancing there.
Uh, but I do beli- if I think back to that meeting you and I were in with the, uh, I think it was, it wasn't the fire chief, but, um, someone else appropriate with the police chief.
The, uh, fire safety officer.
Yes, with the fire safety officer. Thank you. And with others as well. I think, so, part of the concern about, uh, the water supply protection district came because some members of the town expressed concern, not about these, but about electric vehicles being allowed on property within the water supply protection district. With the thought that when you're putting, if you're fighting one of these fires, it can result in a tremendous amount, uh, depending how it's fought. Putting water on it could cause leaching into the ground, could cause thus water, water table contamination in theory. Overall, the input from... theory. Um, overall, the input from the fire department, and please correct me if I'm misspeaking, Mr. Harris, was that generally speaking, the way you fight fires for these kinds of batteries is you make sure nothing else catches and if it's going to go, it's going to go. Um, air pollution wise, it falls within the realm of, I mean, fires you don't want don't make zero air pollution, but it is within the realm of other fires you don't want, like your house or something, um, for air pollution. And that if we're not dumping a bunch of water on it and because this sits on a concrete pad, it should not be contaminating. I, I believe I'm the one who brought up that concern. I'm less concerned about it with that impa- with that knowledge myself.
And, and the rationale they'd say basically is you let it burn itself out because the worst thing you can do is put stuff on it because then it'll spread. And, uh, uh, so, and that's again, part of the reason for having the site safety plan and emergency response plan approved by the fire before they can submit. So, they can make sure that they're comfortable with, with it. Um, and additionally, one of the things that we're going, I'm putting in the bylaw and the folks we talked with, they had no problem with it, is that any successful applicant for permit has to provide at least one day of training in the emergency response, uh, operations to the emergency response personnel at the app developer's expense. So, that, and if there's up, and I'm putting in there that if there's a upgrade in the technology, they had to do another one if the fire chief requested. Um, and that way you get the emergency response personnel familiar with the site, familiar with the equipment, familiar with how they going, how the operator's going to respond. I think it's more comfortable for everybody. And they've agreed and the, uh, proposed develop, prospective developer and their attorney had no problem with this. It would be more than happy, because they, they don't want the fire department come in or police department come in doing the wrong thing.
Mm-hmm. Um, now, somewhat for the board, but especially for our townspeople at home. Um, I want to clarify that we're talking about these batteries burning, going up in flames. And I, I want to stress that we are not talking about something that commonly happens. Um, just the opposite. There, there are, in these meetings, um, they've covered industry standards, the way these, I'm going to say machines for lack of a better term, but the way these machines are built and, uh, and the way they're monitored. And it is all designed so that there are multiple opportunities to catch a problem before it gets big. And multiple internal stops in place to prevent problems that don't get caught from being able to become big problems. One of these, while it's not impossible for one of these battery units to actually go up in flames, what is far more common to my understanding is one compartment inside smolders and burns that way and then goes out. And we're not talking about generally, I mean, yes, the worst can happen, but the fires are rare. When they are rare, um, when the rare happens, they also tend to be small. It'd be rare within the rare for it to be big. Um, and if you're someone who's followed this technology, there was one bad fire out in the southwest, I want to say, in Arizona a couple of years ago. And the technology has, the way they package the technology has fundamentally changed to present that, uh, prevent that. Effectively, they used to say, oh, put them all in one building. Now, each one's a standalone unit as opposed to all in one building. So, that when you open the door to get, go in, you're not giving it a big influx of oxygen that could create a combustion event.
What they basically do is that in a, um, medium sized battery storage system, they'll have maybe four to eight of these, effectively twelve by twenty-eight foot tractor trailers. And then that they'll have, each one they'll have multiple batteries. And they're designed so that if one, uh, ignites, it does not lead to the others igniting. They're, they're self-contained within there. And so, and they're monitored twenty-four seven by two different locations for different reasons, but they're monitored that way. They notify, uh, their response team and the fire department. Cause presumably they're going to have their own folks respond first to try to take care of it before anybody else comes on scene. Because what they don't want to have happen is have it shut down and then not be able to function. They want to get, get it sawed as quickly as possible.
And all this meaning that we're going to sit here and we're going to talk about the potential for scary things. It's really hard to keep in, I, I struggle with this. To keep in mind that when you're talking about a potential for a big event, that potential is extremely low. Like, and we want to be ready, but that, no, that doesn't mean it's even vaguely likely to happen. We just, for the same reason, schools have Alice drills, even though events that would require an Alice-like procedure are extremely low. Um, you prepare anyway.
So, can I ask?
Please.
So, what about the possibility of built-in containment? Like, like if you've got an above-ground fuel tank, you've got to have, if that's the brings leak, you've got to have the capacity can contain whatever leaks out.
They said nothing leaks out. That's, that's.
Well, if it burns and it melts, it's going to leak out somewhere.
Um, the way they described it, it, there's not, there's no liquid there to leak out. It, uh, because I questioned about liquefaction of it. They said it, that doesn't happen. And it just smolders into a pile of junk. Uh, and, um, I did, I am, have suggested there should be some type of containment. There's rid, they said there's nothing contained. That's, that's the question. But there's going to be a, the, they will be on concrete pads already. So, and the, the real desirable look at thing for them to, in case they're catastrophic, is actually when it smolders down the safe level, they bring in, put them on a flatbed, haul off to someplace and let it burn itself out.
So, then maybe it would be a benefit to specify no floor drains in the facilities they're in. But if they're on tractor trailers, then there has to be a floor drain.
They're, they're on the, I described tractor.
They're, uh, they're effectively a device the size of a shipping container.
Yeah.
So, they're not on a tractor trailer, but they're the size of a trail, they're the size of a shipping container, which is about the size of a.
Tractor.
Trailer. Yeah. Um, no, fair question about that, but they're not on the trucks themselves. They are brought in as independent units, put on the pad. Um, and again, for the board and for people at home, I am one of the most skeptical people when a business says, I want to work with government because that, there, there's times businesses really are sincere about that. And there's times that that's an opportunity to try to get things crafted so you benefit and no one else does. Um, we're not ju- when they recommend things and say, this is the way it works, at every instance, they're providing independent evidence of that. So, when they say this is the best practice, this isn't the company coming in saying this is the best practice. They're saying according to these industry standards and these public, like, it's not them saying, well, of course, this is the best. They're giving additional standards and verification for the approaches and pointing to where these have been updated over time to deal with previous issues.
But, but an answer that points, either we can put into the bylaw, or at least in draft bylaw that says, hey, each of the, uh, units have to be on a concrete pad with appro- appropriate containment. And then then more with the fire chief side, what's the appropriate size for that?
So appropriate as.
And no, and no drainage allowed from the, from.
No floor drain, which, which means no vehicular access to the building.
Right.
There will not be a building.
No. That the containers are the.
So, it's a co- it will be effectively a concrete pad with a set of containers on it.
That's going to look like ass.
Well, that is why these are looking to, oh, yeah, there won't be queue.
Yeah.
But that's why there, uh, I believe we were looking at only commercial and industrial and with appropriate setbacks.
We, we can't park a mobile home on our property, but you can park all this crap in commercial areas that looks.
And you require screening and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
So, I would be amenable to fixing that mobile home issue at some point too, because I've got opinions about that.
So, that's, that was my question. This battery bylaw is only for commercially sized battery systems for solar, not residential unless a residential wanted to put a commercially sized one?
No. Well, it's going to address any battery storage system. And it would create three categories, small, medium, and large.
Okay.
Small would be.
Like a Tesla battery.
Yes. Small would be something like a one to four, well, something sort of one to four residential units.
Okay.
Some that may serve a parking lot for a residential area, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause that has EV connections in. Because where you have electric vehicles, you're going to end up having a storage. There should be a small one that's probably a couple of square feet. Um, and then medium would be a enclosure of no more than ten thousand square feet that probably have like eight of these containers. But that's a distribution, what they call distribution level. And then above that is what they call the utility level. We would call large. And that would be something that, they said, they don't see that come in here. But, um, that's not what they would want to do anyway. Uh, and a ten thousand would be a pretty large facility for distribution based on the discussions we've had. And, um, some communities do it by the kilowatt hour or megawatt hours of storage capacity. But one things we have problem with that is we're seeing technology changes. So, that what used to take twenty acres for a couple of megawatts of solar power now takes five acres. And battery technology is becoming more advanced, so it's getting even smaller. So, that's the reason we're looking at, regulate by the story, the enclosure area for the, um, batteries. And then requiring a larger area, space area. And one reasons we came up with the idea of a site safety plan is the location they point out, the fire, um, fire representative said, that's a perfect location for it. And I asked, well, what would, how would you define a perfect access for these? And base is one of these, I can't tell you what the criteria would be, but if I see it, I know it. And so, he said, well, why don't we do a site safety plan requirement? And they had to have the fire chief, police chief sign off on it beforehand. And that way they can address the proximity of buildings, they can address, uh, ability to get fire equipment act, accessing, equipment accessed into there if they need to. Um, so that's, that's where we're going at with this. Um, because I was looking, I looked at others, I was saying, no, one has like six hundred megawatt. I thought, that's a huge, that's a substation. And, uh, that'd be scary. But we're looking at like, again, small would be something that would serve one to four residential units, uh, or a parking lot that has multiple electric vehicle, um, charging stations. And then have medium and having, uh, large. Um, with that threshold being ten thousand between medium and large, ten thousand square foot, uh, enclosure. And then another category of various energy storage systems accessory. Where you have a solar generating facility that's been approved by the town, they could have battery energy storage that's accessory to that. That would include solar canopy systems as well as ground mounted systems. Cause if they're generating that, uh, power from solar panels, they're going to have to have battery storage. That's, that's just a requirement. And the attorney general has made clear in various places I've seen that they felt battery storage is required to be allowed as accessory to a solar generating facility. And building manager said these, they've also said, you pretty much have to treat battery energy storage similar to what you treat solar generating facilities. Got it. So, that's where we stand with, and that's the direction I'm going with it.
Um, and some of these will also have, especially these medium sized ones, will have some additional setback, even if only for things due to noise generation as well. Because they're not, the, the medium sized ones, I think, were compared to effectively in, um, a commercial central air conditioning unit. They're not loud, but they're not quiet.
They're not silent.
Yeah. Um, and so, as well, like, we, we talked about appropriate decimal levels and everything else at the property line, which would also impact, uh, doesn't supplant the need for screening, but it also illustrates that you're not necessarily talking about four or six shipping containers right next to, um, someone's house or really anything else. It would be back.
And basically requiring compliance with mass DEP noise policy.
So, I got a couple of suggestions for while you're drafting is.
Sure.
Is it's probably pretty obvious, but you could probably use our existing solar for the fire portion of the, than battery bylaw. But the, I would recommend you, you grab some language for marijuana bylaw for the police part of it because they have a very, very scrutinized, detailed description in there. And, and we've already, we've already vetted it out through our police station in our town. So, that might behoove you to save some time.
Okay.
Um, a question, do we have to do small, medium, and large? Is the state telling us we have to? Because right now we only do small and large.
No, you don't, but you're better if you do a small, medium, and large as opposed to just small and large.
We're better if we revise our existing bylaw to include medium and change the nameplate capacity to the square foot.
That would be really great.
It would be great, but we don't have the time.
Right.
We've got, we've got one more meeting before the warrant even.
And so, that's the reason I'm looking at small, medium, and large and not using, uh, megawatt or kilowatt hour as the threshold.
And when we, when we update the solar bylaw, we may well make the solar bylaw match this. Small, medium, and large was kind of put forward as fairly typical classifications because you're talking about individual residents or neighbor use versus, um, neighborhood use versus utility.
Sure. But I mean, as far as consistency in regulation and, and what people are looking at when they come to the town, we got, we got a solar field. You can put up panels small and large, but if you're on batteries, you can medium and they're going to be different now because we're going to do size footprint on the batteries and we're still going to have nameplate capacity on solar. We already know we need to update our solar. Why don't we go ahead and just make this one like our solar to fit all in the same categories and groups and similarities? And then when we update our solar, we can update both of them together. So, that, that at least our bylaw is consistent from the get-go.
I would disagree with that.
Okay.
Because I don't think it is palatable to the public.
Okay.
Uh, based on what I've seen, I don't think it will be palatable to the townspeople for us to put forward a bylaw and then maybe six months later say, oh, and now here's all those changes to the bylaw we just put forward.
It's not that hard to explain, but.
I, I don't disagree that it's not hard to explain. I, I don't disagree that it's not hard to explain.
Mm-hmm.
I still don't think it will be well accepted, because, uh, because humans are not rational creatures, as much as we fancy we are, and we like to think we are. Um, studies show that we're not, and I respect that. Like, we are locked in these bodies we have, and they've got certain logical faults, so work within it, is my thought.
Yep.
I also think for the brief period they don't match, I don't know if it's the end of the world, because we're looking at different things, uh, and that will match up anyway, because really, we're passing this right now because there's one company, and there may be others in the future, that want to put in, we're talking about batteries as accessory of solar, but the state has been clear that you, that batteries count as solar in that because you allow, we have to allow solar, we have to allow the batteries that are part of that infrastructure, even if they're completely removed from the solar component, which is why this company's business model is battery setups, not battery plus solar.
And the reason the state's taking that position is without the standalone battery uh, storage systems, it'd be impossible for the state to meet its, uh, clean energy goals.
Again, this is Lunenburg, and I'm not too goddamn concerned about the state, quite honestly.
But that's what drives the state.
Impacts the town.
And that drives on, onto the towns around Commonwealth.
And then just to finish off my comment, so my, my question about containment is there is none? There's no need for it because there's nothing to contain?
Yeah.
Or they are self-contained? Is that, could that be a better answer? I, I'd.
Well, I, I was gonna include an appropriate size containment requirement and let the fire chief decide what's appropriate.
And that way.
Appropriate, we can, yeah.
And that way if the technology, so we've talked, uh, Richard and I and some of the others have talked about what we can do to make this a longer term bylaw that doesn't need updating with the tech as frequently. Um, so we don't end up with this 10 kilowatt hour issue with, that our current bylaw has. And I think that's great, because then if the tech changes and they start putting in ones that could leak something, then the fire department is already equipped to say, "Hey, hey, we know this leaks or could leak, therefore it requires a different system." So I, I think that is very wise. I'm agree, I mean, I, I'm in full agreement with letting fire department pick. And, uh, again, for those bylaw junkies at home, I know some of you exist, that's one of those discussions of how do we craft bylaws to make them last longer, so we don't have to revisit them as often. Um, that ain't easy. I wish it were.
And process of crafting bylaws is not a pretty sight.
Fun like a root canal. All right. Um, scenic roads is next on our list. We really talked about deprioritizing that unless there was like a big serendipitous moment where the subcommittee on that was like, "Oh, boy."
I think I'm almost ready to put that stuff that I've been promising for a month in there.
Yeah?
Yeah. Um, but, but I will definitely be ready when the board is ready.
Okay.
Can we say that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Water Supply Protection District, we have, we received the, uh, in our, in our files, the full line-by-line comparison, uh, from Mr. Harris.
I didn't see that until I got here today, though. I spent about 10 hours going through our existing and the draft and the use table. Um, and now I can go back and look at what's in the Google Drive.
Mm-hmm.
10 copies. So full disclosure, I had, uh, received emails and responded to a couple of them and invited them to the meeting tonight. Um, one was not able to make it, but submitted a lengthy response.
Hmm.
That I've, I tried to, to address. Um, it went in a lot to the, to the MGL, and so that prompted me to get into the MGL. And reading that over and then reading our existing bylaw, I'm like, "Oh, my God, we've dropped such a big ball here." Um, I, I kind of feel like now I'd wanna talk to the water district and, and get some, some clarifying answers. Um, it, it appears that not only are there a lot of, uh, existing things that we don't do for the existing bylaw, um, I think that I don't know. I, I, I think it's, it's not a good idea to be dropping our, our Zone 1 protections above and beyond the states. Um, and I've got, of course, other things to say about it, but that's the majority. I wanted to mention the email correspondence.
Um, so I understand you received email correspondence. I don't fully understand what was contained within, which.
Well.
Or what the concerns were, I mean.
They were basically expressing concern with, with presenting the bylaw, uh, if, if it's considerably the same as the previous one. And it, it, at this point seems like it is, so. I mean, the, uh, the edits that I noticed in the draft that I have, which was '08, I think the majority of those edits were just to, to, to get rid of the two, uh, changes that we had on the floor at last meeting.
Yep. The edits I made today were, were designed to address the issues that were raised regarding Zone 1, Zone 2, 3 uses. And also I made edits to, uh, in my opinion, clarify, uh, the special permit required uses in Zone 2 and site plan review uses in Zone 3.
So you were saying that your concerns about how our, you said our current, do you mean the current on-the-books bylaw?
Yep.
And how that doesn't match MGL?
Well.
I, I.
Oh, well, no. The email is what I said, was, I was told doesn't match, our bylaw doesn't match, and I was going back and forth, and apparently the email was referencing uh, surface water, whereas this is not surface water, this is well water.
Round water.
So different regulations, different MGL, different numbers. They were spunking about, they were talking about 22.20, and whereas wells are 22.21, something like that. Um, so there was some confusion, um, on both sides of that email. Um, but our current bylaw requires, um, special permits for everything. And I've never, I've never, never on this board issued a special permit for anything for the Water Supply Protection District, which is an interesting, then. I was upset that Adam was wanting to change our bylaw because we don't enforce it, and now I've come to realize what it is that we don't enforce, and it's amazingly huge, what we don't enforce.
Okay. Um, so have board members had the opportunity to review? Uh, Mr. Harris did a line-by-line comparison between our on-the-books bylaw and the proposed Water Supply Protection District. Have people had the opportunity to review those documents?
Uh, not in their entirety.
Yeah, I've skimmed, um, most of them.
Okay.
But I was out of town.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would love more time to review.
Okay. Um, my concern be, I, I hear that. My concern being that the current bylaw, uh, the current proposed bylaw was tabled until spring town meeting. Um, Mr. Harris has suggested some amendments to that to, uh, again, to specifically kind of call out Zone 1, to clarify to all of those who are concerned, understandably, when the DEP map has Zone 1 and Zone 2 overlapping, really, then, again, beyond what the proposed bylaw was, then really laying out, saying, "If the map has Zone 1 and Zone 2 in the same area, it counts as Zone 1, and Zone 1 doesn't get, it is controlled by the state, not by lo- local municipality." Like, the restrictions there are not set by us, they're set by DEP, because that's the reality of the law. Um, along with a few other changes. And to do that, that would require a, the easiest way, and I think, again, most palatable to the townspeople, would be to put that forward as a new bylaw, rather than putting out in the town warrant a bylaw that then at town meeting was saying, "But wait, here's all these changes to it as amendments." And timing, we'd have to have that public.
Yeah. My suggestion would be that we advertise next week for hearing. At last meeting, you said you want to have the hearing March 25th. That means we need to put the legal notice in the paper next week and send out notice to the various entities. Um, what we could do is advertise the draft for our supply protection district rewrite, advertise the battery storage system. Mine's in, uh, the scenic roads would be a general bylaw anyway, so it wouldn't be zoning, and I can do solar. So we advertise those for hearing on March 25th. The board discussed these further on March 11th.
Okay, yep.
And then based on the input from the hearing on March 25th, you decide whether you wanna have further revisions or withdrawal or have them proceed from there.
I wasn't sure if we had to have, I, I always, the intricacies of dates for legal timing always elude me. I wasn't sure if we had to, if we were, if we were operating with two weeks less time, and that was going to be a bigger concern for me.
At the time of public hearing advertisement, you need to at least have your draft, uh, bylaw amendments, right?
Okay.
For public view. And recognize it can't be final, cause that's why you're holding a public hearing.
Great. And we do have it, uh, whether or not we make changes to it, which we may well, we do have a draft.
Yeah.
So, okay. Annie, you wanted to say something, I didn't want to.
Am I mistaken in that the warrant articles, isn't there a deadline for March 18th?
I don't know the warrant article deadline. Is it March 18th?
Something like that.
It is the 18th.
And what we would do is submit the public hearing drafts, uh, for placeholders in the warrant.
Are, okay. I was just making sure that was.
If we made changes.
We're having a, a public hearing.
Yeah, so you can't have the public hearing afterwards. We did last year, or in the, in the fall, actually.
Devin, you can have a public hearing anytime before town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I've known boards to have a public hearing earlier and then have another public hearing the day before.
Um, now, if we look, so if we look it over before next meeting, next meeting have some work time, agree on some edits we want to see.
Mm-hmm.
Can those go in, can those edits go into what we put into the town war- warrant?
What?
Yeah.
The town warrant?
Yeah, what I would do is, you know, the way I would approach it for the public hearing purposes is this what was advertised, and the here are proposed amendments and modifications that the board will discuss further at the public hearing, so people have advance notice.
What, what I'm thinking about is I want the content in the warrant.
Right.
To be as far along as we can possibly be.
And that's what I would hope we.
And so on the 11th, if we go, "Oh, wait, here's some changes we want," we could include those in the warrant, even though the public hearings already been scheduled.
Yeah, I think you could, yes.
Okay. Great. Because I, I don't, I, I want whatever we put in the warrant to be, hopefully, just minus public input in that case. I mean, which doesn't have to be minus public input. You can always come to these meetings, and even if we're not required to hear from you, we're gonna wanna hear from you. Again, if you have any input at any point, raise that hand. Um.
Oh, my God, go. So, so when I say the warrant closes on March 18th, that means that they're not, they're not accepting any new warrant articles, okay?
Correct.
We don't have to have what gets printed in the warrant.
Oh.
Ready until end of March, early April, so it can go.
Something like that.
Oh.
It goes out to the printers to get printed into the warrant that then gets sent to the homeowners. So we're gonna have two, maybe three meetings. You know, we're gonna have at least one, and then we're gonna have a public hearing, and then we're gonna have at least another one between, well, no, we'll have the public hearing probably before it has to go to the printers.
This makes me, this makes my heart sing with ease.
I thought it might, so.
Thank you.
Ah, what again, with this jerk next to me.
Right?
Hey?
So fun fact, by the way, um, I don't know if Mr. Allison gets mistaken for me, but I frequently get mistaken for Mr. Allison in the halls of town government.
There's a lot of Matts now, yeah.
Because they see the long-haired, bearded planning board chair and go, "Oh, it must be the same guy." There are people I, I introduce myself to, and they go, "Oh, we've met before." I'm like, "Almost, but that's okay."
As long as neither of you are offended by the other being.
We'll say we're not, and we'll quietly see it inside, and it will be fine. All right. Okay. So I hear people wanna look at, we'll get back to it next week. Having myself a. Next meeting, thank you, that is correct. I, I appreciate that clarification. The tone of my voice is for myself, not for the clarification, not for the correction. All right. Do we have any other discussion for tonight?
On these topics, on the solar?
On solar or water supply or?
Oh, I got so much, but if we're not ready to talk about water supply, then I won't, I won't bring it up.
Okay.
I'd rather have everybody have, you know, a basic.
Great.
And I, I, again, I did this last, a while ago, it's not fresh in my mind.
Okay.
But I do wanna mention that, um, and you haven't mentioned it yet, you probably were going to in the future, but Green Communities Task Force, they reached out to us, they wanted to have a meeting, and they've, they've scheduled it for March 6.
Uh, for the solar, yeah, that's what I was.
To have the solar discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So if we wanna have, I, I, I'm more than able to go to that meeting, and I assume you want to go, so if, if we wanna have more than two of us, we'll need to post for that, which is not a big deal.
I, you know, I, I apologize. Uh, having read those quickly, I didn't think that, I didn't realize it was to the whole board. I am, so that's why.
I don't think it was, but it, it could be.
Yeah, so, um.
I mean, their open meeting can be our open meeting as well.
That's fair. Uh, I do plan on being there. Do people want to meet with the Green Communities? Well, if Matt and I are planning to be there, the question is, do you two wanna be there as well, or no?
This is next Wednesday?
It's March 6, I believe it's next Wednesday. Um, not, not this coming, but next.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I believe it's 6:30 in the upstairs of the Ritter. Uh, but they haven't posted it yet, so that's open to change.
Yeah, I don't, I can't make that date.
Okay.
I will need to double check. I'd like to, um, and I can get information back as soon as I can.
Okay.
Okay. And then when would we need to post that we're meeting to?
Not Monday.
Monday.
Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. So Tim, if you can know in the next couple of days, so we can make sure we can get that out, that'd be perfect. I mean, yes, we have a week, but.
As soon as possible.
Yep. Okay, great. Um, and I'll reach back out to them. I think that puts us in a good way. All right. Excellent. And we all got home. And we all got homework and reading. So, next on the agenda is minutes approval. We don't have any minutes. Some has been brought up from the community, some concern because our board is behind on minutes. We haven't approved them in a while, you may have noticed. And to explain for the, our friends at home, planning offices running short-staffed. We had, until recently, Ms. Aubrey, and now we kind of have Ms. Aubrey as needed. And Ms. Josie Gilchrist is filling in in the office as well. You may know her from doing everything around town. And I mean that as a compliment, if that comes across otherwise. We have Mr. Harris, who is with us not full-time and not permanently. And so, the reality is, we have an office that is working the best it can under the circumstances. Now, I do know that Ms. Gilchrist has been working on minutes now for the backlog, as well as has suggested some technology that she believes will be helpful for getting minutes out easier in the future. Does she talk to you about that today?
I'm actually utilizing them right now.
Okay, that, well, I was going to ask you about that, the--
Cool, utilizing them? The board clerk?
There's, I'm sorry?
The board clerk?
No.
The utilizing transcribing technology to help cut down the time it takes to take minutes.
Oh, so instead of--
Voice transcription.
Instead of one-page minutes, we'll have eight-page minutes?
Possibly more.
That sounds bad. I'm sorry, I just, I gotta say--
No, I understand.
Potentially, potentially difficult in some ways, yes, but that may also be-- that, I mean, on one hand, that also gives an even more thorough representation to the public. Now, you could get into the logic of, which is actually more transparent completeness or summary for clarity, and that's a fair discussion. But regardless, this may be the best tool we have currently for getting them out in a timely fashion.
Just another example of something we don't have any say or power or authority over, so we'll just deal with it.
I think the goal is to have a condensed two-page summary of the minutes. Right now, transcription is being utilized to abide by open meeting law. And then that--
Violating.
And that will be basically a placeholder. It's not an end-all, and we're hoping to not lean on that technology for long-term, but in order to play catch-up, it's basically what's being used.
Just a jerk kind of a question. How far behind is the Select Board in their minutes?
About the same.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Now, on the other hand, are you an urban planner? Are you an urban planner who wants to work for the town of Lunenburg? Have I got news for you.
Yes.
Come on, apply, we'd love to work with you.
Urban planner?
Well, that, the--
Urban planner?
Yeah, because that is, in fact, the, that is the profession. I don't believe, I've-- Is rural planning considered a--
Yeah. Rural town planner.
Well, so, I mean, but is it, I only see programs, and I don't see programs or classifications for rural planning separate from urban planning.
That's because this is Massachusetts, and this state doesn't want that.
Urban planners, planning probably occupies most of the profession, and they're, and they get the most notoriety because Boston, Hartford, New York, Houston, Atlanta, they, they get all the notoriety. But there's, yeah, it's small-town rural planner kinds that does get, that is a niche in the mining profession.
But is, are there certifications still for urban planning?
It's just certification of planning.
Oh, there we go. So, I'll tell you what. Have you got a pulse? Do you know what the word "planning" means, maybe?
You've got to be--
No, no, that would not be helpful.
Need more qualifications than that.
Oh, boy, howdy. But, again, if you know someone, if you have a friend who's in planning, but you say "planning" without "urban," in our context, it makes sense, in the broad scope, less clear. But you know an urban, rural, suburban, sub-suburban, ultra-urban, archeology planner, send him our way. Wouldn't that be something, the Lunenburg archeology? That, that won't happen. All right. Committee reports. Master Plan Steering Committee.
Next meeting for the Master Plan Steering Committee is not this Thursday, but next Thursday, the 7th.
And if I may hop on that quickly--
Yeah, 7th.
I did not speak with Over Under and Associates last week for our twice-monthly call because it was vacation week, and unsurprisingly, people were on vacation. All right. Open Space Ad Hoc Committee.
We have not met, we're, I think we're meeting this Wednesday, but we had a site walk on Lake Shirley. Did I report on that? I think that was between our last meeting here.
No, we haven't heard that yet, so--
So, we, there was a site walk at two parcels owned by the, well, under the care and control of the Select Board, they're municipal parcels, and Open Space membership had gone to Select Board to recommend that Select Board transfer care custody and control of those two parcels to parks. And so, that led the impetus to the site walk. We showed up at Parmenter Road. It's kind of like a pie shape. It's got a big crust along the road and a very little pointy piece, it might be 30 feet at the end, which is the water. So, it's not necessarily the ideal spot. It's kind of a dead-end road, it's very private. There were, there was only about 70 residents that showed up to that one parcel site walk. And then we moved on to Stump Cove, which most people know about, affectionately known as Stump Cove. It's the piece that you can see when you're going on Reservoir just before Fire Road 25, I think, Sharp Corner, Goodrich Street. Anyways, three-acre parcel. There were fewer people that continued on there. There might have been 40 or 50 people with us at that point. It was a very, it was a very difficult meeting. If I was a member of the Select Board, I would not have been happy with the way that meeting went because it was just, there was just a lot of people, and, and there was no-- anyways, it was a site walk, and there was a lot of discussion, and there has been no movement yet. I believe that'll come up in the future at the Select Board meetings. But I think that, I don't, I don't, I can't see anything coming on the horizon for, for chapter land withdrawals either.
Very good, thank you. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
Oh, another thing that we have not met for quite a while. I think September, October might have been our last meeting.
I'm curious if there's a reason? Because I, I felt like there was still work to be done there.
Depends on who you ask.
Okay.
But my understanding is, the primary thing right now is, so, we have been focused on using the TC Passios as the in-between, the go-between. Like, if we wanted to empty out Town Hall to renovate it, then the staff would go to TCP temporarily, and once renovated, would come back. Or, the actual plan was to renovate the Ritter Building, vacate that into the TC Passios, renovate the Ritter Building and add an annex to that to become the full municipal space for all town offices. But then we had a joint meeting with the Select, with the School Committee. There were a whole lot of concerns raised about Turkey Hill, and apparently, the gears have shifted to folk, shift the, shift, shift the focus from the TC Passios to potentially the Turkey Hill. The idea being that Turkey Hill is newer, it's in better shape, and arguably, a better facility for a future municipal group, building, whatever. So, I think that that, along with the, with the really huge screw-up on the assessments last year, and with the huge pitfalls in our budgeting, probably put the kibosh on planning for million-dollar spending on buildings. That's just my take on it, but--
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whole lot of opinions about Turkey Hill. Sure would be nice if-- why express frustration about Turkey Hill? That isn't even locally. That's knowing what they've gone through to try to find out from the state what has to be done and how money could be used. And even the state isn't getting back to them with, you know, the SBC-- SBC, is that the--
MSBC.
MSBC, thank you.
MSBA. Municipal Schools and Buildings--
Yes, thank you. Not being clear, like, not being clear about what their own requirements are to get funding. And I don't mean the annual shift in focus. I mean, like, like we've talked about before, the whole must be a school for the useful life of the item. Well, if windows can last 50 years, does that mean you're committing a building to 50 years of use? Because that's not normal. All right. Good golly, Miss Molly.
I could go on for hours.
I--
I could.
I sure hope we see progress somehow because money or not, plans have to happen. That's my opinion. All right. Agricultural Commission.
We have not met since our last meeting. Our last meeting, I didn't get to post because of that happened, snowstorm blizzard that we had, and canceled, we canceled the town, but then we still had night meetings, which is a question. I don't remember ever having closed the town offices and later that night having meetings. I don't ever remember that happening.
No idea.
I have absolutely no idea.
But it did.
Yep.
Anyways, we are scheduled on the 7th. So, if the 6th is a Wednesday, we're scheduled on the 7th. We're scheduled on the first Thursday.
Okay.
In hopes to get the market squared away, get the market application formalized and ready to go out to vendors. We're hopefully, we're in hopes to interview it or discuss the potential of management with at least two, three people that have expressed interest. And then also, something else that we had, it was a, it was a forum put together by, oh, man, I don't remember anybody's name. Our district representative. Yeah, that person. But there was a bunch of agricultural commissioners. She's got a six-state, six-town district. And it was Lunenburg, Ashby, Peppel, Groton, Townsend, and Dunstable. Groton was not able to be reached. Townsend doesn't even have an agricultural commission, but the Chair of the Conservation Commission is an agriculturalist. He's a farmer. He came to the meeting. Myself and my vice-chair, Mary Ray, we were there. Jim Latanzi, Pittsburgh, Lunenburg, Hollis Hills Farm. He was in attendance. The discussion mostly was about what the state can do to help us, and I think the majority of the input was involved with, help us preserve agricultural lands, help us preserve land in general, help us maintain and, and work agricultural lands that are owned by the town, and a lot of stuff about helping out with the farmers' markets, providing some assistance, providing some direction, some, just helping us out there. And it, no more else, no more than helping us brainstorm ways to improve our functions as farmers' markets and to bolster our attendance.
Very good, thank you. Capital Planning Committee has not met. Economic Development Committee is currently meeting, or was earlier this evening at 6:00. Can't tell you what happened because I was here. There was a reschedule, I've not needed for, due to vacation week. I am not needed for Quorum, so I'm not part of Quorum, I should say. Stormwater Task Force.
We had a meeting this past Thursday. We met with one of the town's consultants, G.I. Oh, CEI, thank you. About kind of what goes into making a Stormwater Enterprise Fund. And now, we're just kind of taking it apart and figuring out what pieces we want in. And then, the next steps for putting it together, and then I think they expect like a year's worth of advertising before we're ready to put it to the town for vote.
Is it advertising or public outreach?
Public outreach, sorry.
That's fine, they're pretty much the same, but you're looking for feedback.
That's, that's what CEI expects, is a year to 18 months of public outreach, so--
So, I am dead grateful for the work y'all are doing and the forward progress on this. Just knowing the budgetary challenge that Stormwater is going to continue to pose to this, this town, like we're unique, I mean, to every town in the state. I, I am glad to see Stormwater Task Force moving in this direction. Thank you ver, I mean, from me, thank you very much.
I'm glad that it has started moving along. We've made some progress and found our traction.
Love it. Monticrist Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, so we met on the 8th. I didn't bring my notes. I do remember, I've spoken before about the municipal help that MRPC wants to provide, where one person goes to multiple communities. Lunenburg was not on the list, which I found surprising if we are lacking in the planning department and, you know, other departments needing some help. I'm surprised we weren't on the list. I believe that goes to town manager. I don't know who would make those decisions.
It is my under, so, my understanding, I, I am not the town manager, but my understanding is that we are not currently using them because we have Mr. Harris. Knowing that Mr. Harris' time with us does, is finite. Talks have begun with them to potentially bring them in as part of the kind of land use director fill-in for once we no longer have Mr. Harris. That is my understanding.
My understanding, the positions available for helping a town is not necessarily his position. I'm sure there are people who are able to travel like that, but there are other positions that might not be so high up, who more do like the, kind of the day-to-day, catching up on notes and things like that. Again, I'm not sure because they don't reach out to me directly, but that's, from my understanding, it was helping all departments that need help.
Could, you and I chat for a few minutes at some point when you do have your notice to go over that some more because that could be info that we could bring--
Yeah.
For the town. I believe Ms. Lemieux's fully on top, knows all of those options, but it would behoove us to be sure and make sure we can stress anything we think would be beneficial for the department.
I'm surprised they're offering anything less than the planning staff position.
I believe so. I, I'll pull up my, the agenda tonight and send it to you.
Cool, thank you. Monticrist Joint Transportation Committee.
They met, I was unable to attend that meeting. I was traveling.
They met at 2:30 in the afternoon, right?
On Valentine's Day.
Right? That's why I had eventually dropped that one was because it was kid pickup time.
It's very hard, very hard.
The number of calls, the number of meetings I took for that committee from the driveway of the primary school is significant. All right. Meeting schedule. Lunenburg Plan Board meets at 10-- Uh, Lunenburg Plan Board meets at Town Hall at, unless otherwise noticed. We meet at 6:00 PM, and our upcoming meetings include February 26th and March 11th.
Definitely don't include February 26th.
Okay, hush. We are not at the end of the meeting, so we can say it's upcoming. Um, March 11th and March, two weeks after that.
25th.
My name's Annie, I can do math. I mean, better than me, in fairness, so. This is what happens when you get me too close to nine o'clock, everyone. Um, you get belligerent o'clock. Ongoing items. I see nothing there that needs our current attention that we didn't discuss otherwise, so I'm happy to move us on. Public comment. I'm assuming there's no one in the waiting room. Or, uh, seeing none? Board comment slash concerns.
No, nothing to address.
Um, I, I said earlier that March 26th was the caucus. Is that the actual, was I correct? March, March 25th, I think. Because they're typically the, the third, the-
Tuesday.
They're typically on a Monday, meetings. Is it a Tuesday?
March 25th is a Monday.
That, that's what I thought. Actually, I thought I heard 26 for caucus, but it's almost always on Monday. Anyway, while, while, while that gets looked for, um, I, uh, I watched the Select Board's last meeting. They had the state delegation there. They had, um, Scarsdale, Mrs. Scarsdale is the one who put together that group for agriculture that I talked about. So, um, they had the delegation, Select Board all up here, delegation down there. They had Senator Cronin, Representative Koushmerik, and Representative Scarsdale. It was, uh, somewhat, well, it was, it was longer than it was expected by the Chair of the Select Board, um, and, and near the end of it, it, it had obviously become somewhat of a contentious meeting. Um, and at the end of the Select Board meeting, which was another hour and a half later, the obviousness of the contention was, uh, just so overwhelming that it was like you were slapped in the face with contention. There were boards not happy with other boards, not happy with other boards, not happy with individuals. There was a lot of pushback about the state, uh, coming, uh, not just this year, but in past years as well, to spend an hour sitting there telling us what a great job they're doing and about all their pet projects, and not really talking to us and asking us questions about how they can help the town of Lunenburg specifically, uh, which I can't really disagree with. Uh, I certainly wouldn't have been fully, uh, well, I can't disagree with that. That, that they had a lot of aspirations, and, um, a lot of the questions were coming up about, well, we're, we're in such loss of money, funds from the state. You promised us this, you've given us that, and they're not the same, and we, we, we didn't get our chapter nine, is it chapter ninety funding that we didn't get because of the 40S funding? Chapter, chapter seventy funding we didn't. We got extra chapter seventy funding, so that put us over the limit to get 40S funding or something, or maybe one student dropped out of the tri-town area, I don't know. But we were expecting a couple hundred thousand dollars, I think, from 40S, and we didn't get it. Um, and then, of course, the ESER money for the schools dried up, and, um, you know, I've got nothing to point my finger at except for poor budgeting on the superintendent's part, but that's my personal opinion. Uh, the Select Board meeting, um, there was a lot of discussion, uh, from a lot of different individuals representing a lot, representing a lot of different groups, also representing themselves, as, as is more than appropriate, in my opinion. This is town meeting run by citizens. Citizens step up and become volunteers. You don't stop being a citizen when you're a volunteer. And, and I, I couldn't really disagree with hardly any of the, the dissent that was brought forth, and I feel bad. I feel bad for everybody, especially the volunteers, because the volunteers are the ones who are dissenting against other volunteers, and, and ultimately, they're all being controlled by paid staff. And then we've got, on the other side of that, the constituency, which is the twelve thousand people. And they don't know what goes on, um, other than these public meetings. And what goes on in these public meetings is not always the greatest rosy picture, and, and, well, should it not be? Because it's not a great rosy picture. Um, I, I, I feel it's unfortunate that people like to, like to see things through rosy lenses, but reality sucks sometimes, and to just sit there and look at sucky reality and say, oh, everything's fine, is kind of stupid in my mind. But, um, this last, last Select Board meeting, three and a half hours, uh, I recommend. It's not great watching, but it's, uh, insightful. Then, because of that, I followed up. I watched the Finance, Finance Committee meeting, uh, where it's spilled over into there. Uh, I, I didn't watch the School Committee meeting. What else did I watch? I did watch the Stormwater, and I was pleased to see you guys organized and actually got doing something, eh? That's awesome. Uh, and I watched another meeting too, and I, it, it was more similar. Um, but I, I just, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, as, as nice as it is to have happy, smiling, friendly people, uh, that is almost not always the case. And, um, you know, it, it's okay to express, uh, disagreement, or, or dissension, or, 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 or flat-out, I don't like that, and that shouldn't be, and that's what governance is all about. It's messy, and you shouldn't expect it not to be. So, um, in that light, I thank all of our volunteers. I thank all of our staff. I thank all of our citizens for being such great people, um, when you're being great people. Thank you.
On the topic of volunteers and great people, um, no one here is up for reelection this year, correct?
No one here, but the N.C.
Well, that, but I was saying, I just want to make sure I knew correctly.
Oh, yeah.
It is Eric's turn?
It is his turn, yeah.
Yes, uh, so, Mr. Troverston has, um, been a name on this board for the past five years. I cannot say that I know his, what he will be doing, because I have had no communication. But, um, given that I have not seen him in over a year, more, um, I am presuming he is not running for reelection, and even if he does wish to, uh, that certainly is prerogative.
Nobody votes for him.
It is anyone's prerogative to run for this board. And with Town Caucus coming up, um, again, on the topic of great people who are volunteers, I see three great people on this stage and one poser, and, um, I pointed at myself already. You can do that.
I pointed at myself.
No, no, too late. You could join us, and, um, it might not be, it might not look exciting, but I can guarantee you, it actually really is more fun once you're in the weeds and learning it. There's a lot to learn, there's a lot you can do to help the town. And you, to be clear, you don't need to have experience. You hear us talking up here about, um, you hear us talking like we know what we're talking about. I'll tell you, I was paid a very nice compliment, um, last, at the Fall Town meeting, when a member of the town turned to me and said, "It's really nice to have you up there as someone who knows what's, who really knows their stuff about planning." Look, I'll admit that scared me a little. But the reality is, you don't need to know a lot about planning. I knew, the most I knew about planning came because my brother is a civil engineer in another state, mostly working with other countries. So, like, not a lot. You don't need to have a background. The whole planning system is set up so average citizens can come in, ask questions. We have experts on hand to guide us through the legal aspects. But it's up to the citizenry to make the decisions, to verify and vote. You could be one of them, and I hope, I hope multiple of you will choose that, and then we can have a contested election for Planning Board, and that would be amazing. But I hope at least one of you chooses to volunteer, uh, get their name in the Town Caucus and come on out, because more people on this board only strengthens the town. And if you're saying, "Matt, I hear you, but planning sounds like the biggest drag in the world", first, I'll say, hello, Lindsay, my wife. She has opinions about this work, uh, which is better me than her. But there's other town positions that will need to be filled, either by election or by appointment. There's positions that currently need to be filled. You could be one of those. Come on down, we'd love to have your help. Feedback, I have gotten from people in town, and I am not going to try to contradict what Mr. Allison said about some difficulties, because I agree with them. By the same token, I will say that I've spoken with people in Lunenburg Town Government who have been clear that of all the towns they've worked in, Lunenburg is the most collaborative, supportive, and helpful. Doesn't mean we don't have areas we do need to improve. Everyone does, and we have some clear ones. But you're working with people, many of whom at least, I'd like to imagine all of them, really want what's best and are looking to pull together. That's my soapbox. We want to get out of here? Yes, please. All right, then I'll accept an emotion. Uh, emotion, not an emotion. I move you adjourned.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are out. Thank you for joining us tonight, my friends at home, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.